Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council, on April thirteenth, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare, George Glover.
Here.
Ben Saucetta, Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Yovacor.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Colin Harrington is going to lead in the invocation, and Melvin Kerr is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. Lord, we come to you tonight, we just thank you for your goodness. Thank you, Lord, for the city, and, Lord, what you're doing here. And I just pray that, Father, you'd give wisdom to these folks. We thank you for their sacrifice, for their service. We pray, God, that you'd be with our police officers and fire folks. Lord, just keep them safe and protected, and physically, and, Lord, even in the climate of politics we find ourselves in, that, Lord, you'd just bless them in a mighty way. We thank you, Lord, for them, and we just pray that you'd bless them. We ask that you bless this meeting, Lord, there's work that needs to be done. We pray for wisdom, and grace, and blessing upon all those who come. We love you in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
My congratulations to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim?
I'd second that.
Got a motion, a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Tonight, under awards and presentations, we have the introduction of a new police officer. Jeff, if you want to come on up.
While we're getting prepared, I want to have the opportunity, once again, to say how pleased we are to have a new employee. We're especially pleased to have Jeff join our force. He comes to us from the Sheriff's County, I'll get this out, the Cedric County Sheriff's Department. That was mouthful for me, for some reason, this evening. It's just because I'm so excited, Jeff, to have you here. What's exciting is that it's not just from the department that he comes, he actually has worked this area. So, he brings some knowledge of our community, which is really great. In addition, one of the things that he said that was particularly nice on his application is the reason why he wanted to join us was that he was looking for a department where he could grow. And we know that we are in that growth place right now, and so we're really happy to grow his career. So, welcome.
All right. Go ahead and raise your hand. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Kansas.
And of the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations, Jeff. Always exciting when we get to bring somebody else new onboard, especially with good, with experience. Tonight, we have one person signed up for public forum, Karen Spurlock. Did she leave? I spoke with her. All right, so we'll move on to staff reports. Go to Sean Fox, our city administrator. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, just a couple of project updates tonight. First of all, on Seventy-seventh Street Project. Final plans have already been completed. They were submitted to KDOT on April 2nd, and we received their approval/concurrence back today. Tomorrow morning, PEC will be advertising it. The bid opening is scheduled for May 6th. For this particular project, all right-of-way, as far as Phase One, has been secured, and the utilities have already been relocated. Construction will begin no later than June 7th, and they are scheduled in the contract to have 120 workdays, whereas the intersection will be completely closed for that time period. So, the completion should be done sometime in early to mid-October. Next project is Sixty-first Street Project. As you know, we've had folks working for me as far as water line relocation. All that has been done adjacent to the intersection. The right-of-way certification has been submitted. The expected advertisement is now going to be happening in June time period, with a bid opening of approximately July 15th. Construction would start soon thereafter. For this particular project, the construction time is approximately one year, which is much longer than Seventy-seventh. That's partly due to the weather, the fact that we'd have winter to contend with in the middle of there. Plus, we've also made a commitment to the businesses of Park City, to the maximum extent possible, that the intersection remains open at least one way, both ways, throughout the whole entire process. As far as the Fifty-third Street lift station, staff met with Wilson and Company a couple of weeks ago regarding the new lift station. We have already secured the necessary easements and dedication for both the sewer line that's coming from the center of the property down at the half-mile mark to the lift station. Wilson and Company is currently gathering information to determine the most efficient design and best connection point into the system. We expect to see construction on that begin within the next couple of months and be completed by the middle of September. Pickleball courts. As you all know, council approved one court at the senior center and three courts in Hatt McLean Park. The good news is that we're on the contractor schedule. The bad news is with pickleball being such a hot commodity and asphalt, workers right now being in short and looked solid, and are anticipating not starting on that until the end of June. On a positive note, staff applied and was recently approved for a KDOT-approved Traffic Engineer Assistance Program study for both Sixty-first Street North between Broadway and Hydraulic, as well as Fifty-third Street North between AirCap and Chusey Drives. It has been some time since the last TEEP study was completed for the city, but this will give us the opportunity to update and incorporate many of the new or recent developments into the future traffic improvements and growth plan. And, oh, by the way, this is done at no cost to the city. And then finally, for those residents who are thinking about doing some spring cleaning, this Saturday, April 17th, is our Brush and Tree Limb Day. It's at Hatt McLean Park from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Additionally, between April 22nd and the 24th, Cedric County Environmental Resources is hosting a waste tire collection event at 4701 Southwest Street, and that would be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM each day. And then finally, we have recently received our annual supply of coupons that will allow residents to take up to 1,000 pounds of bulk waste to the landfill free of charge. Those are here at the City Administration Center and will be handed out one per household on a first-come, first-served basis. Depending on any questions, that's all I have, sir.
George?
Yeah, I've noticed on Sixty-first Street, you was talking about Sixty-first Street. I've seen some, I don't know what you'd call them, aluminum-type poles, fastened to yield right-of-way sign, and one on Sixty-first and I-135. Are those counters, or what are those?
Did you see them starting today?
I saw them today, yes.
Okay. Because that's the way that I had found out about the TEEP study that we were just approved, is the company called us up and said, hey, short notice, but we're already going to start doing the traffic counts out in Park City today. So, that's what it would be more than likely, is doing traffic counts.
Yeah, there's one, I know there's one on Sixty-first and.
Fifty-third, too.
Yeah, and East Park, they're fastened to the yield right-of-way sign.
That should be traffic counters for this TEEP study.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ben?
Yeah, Sean, I know we're just getting into the springtime, and people are starting to do work and such. How are we doing as far as the exterior grant program and the paint program? Have we had very many applications or anything this year?
Quite honestly, on the exterior grant program, I have seen less than two or three applications within the past couple of months. What is going absolutely crazy at this point is the new home buyers incentive. I think I've approved six of them within the last two weeks. I know many of the builders are getting paired up, and closings may not even be scheduled until October or November, but people are already getting their applications in.
Is there any way to maybe, through social media and such, promote those two programs again, just to see?
We can do that.
Tom?
I was going to say Cedric County, in their yard down there at the Hazardous Waste Building on Sewell, I think it is, in Seneca. They've got a place where they sell stuff that's been turned in, and they're doing white paint and gray paint for $5 a gallon. You get five gallons for $25 for somebody that wants to, and they said it's good-quality latex paint.
Sir, probably include that with your history.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, not seeing anything else. Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Ben?
That we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And Jim?
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to new business, item six, which is discuss and consider appointment to the Community Relations Board. Brittany has come recommended to me from Sherry, and I would suggest that we put her onto the board for the Community Relations Board. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Brittany Milliken to the Community Relations Board.
And Brandy?
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider the resolution approving the sale of Chisholm Creek Utility Authorities Refunding and Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series 2021. Kevin?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Cowan with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We, as a firm, have represented the city for a long time. Usually, it's one of my partners that appears before you, and if it's a Chisholm Creek Utility Authority project, it's me. So, it's been a few years, I see a few familiar faces, and that's, that's good. The resolution before you tonight is what we call the sale resolution. It's kind of the kickoff resolution. The utility authority has adopted a similar resolution that says, we've been talking about this project for a while. There's also a refinancing opportunity, and now we want to authorize the various folks that are involved in this issue and this transaction to go ahead and proceed with the necessary steps to get bonds priced, marketed, and sold. So, this is by no means a final expression of the city. It's, again, it's more of a kickoff saying, we understand this issue is in the works. In particular, if you've looked at the resolution, there are references to a preliminary official statement, which is kind of the prospectus when the city issues bonds, or when the CCUA issues bonds. And so, that's important here, because it authorizes city staff and city officials to work to get that document prepared, because there's a lot of Park City information in it, and a lot of City of Bel Air information in it, because that's the credit that sells these bonds. So, again, a number of things authorized here, just to get the process moving forward. Big picture, the latest calendar, and it may move a little bit, calls for the sale of the bonds in late May, and a closing of the bonds in June. The refinancing component that has been discussed, it's pretty likely that that would be included, because it's a current refunding, you'll be, the utility authority will be able to issue new bonds, pay off prior bonds, and just swap out new interest rates, which are very low right now, for interest rates on the prior bond. So, I, if I had to guess, that probably is part of the transaction. And then, and then the project being financed, and I assume some of you know more about it than I do, but it's sewer treatment, something that's been discussed for more than a year. The current estimate is that that project is going to be about $13 million. I know it hasn't been bid yet, that's part of what's going to come in the next month or two. And the current calendar would have the bids be received prior to final sizing of the issue and pricing of it, which hopefully that works out, because then the bonds will get sized, not based on an estimate, but on the actual bid that's been received. And you've been through this before, but if we're operating under an estimate, that's probably fine, but we probably round up a little bit to make sure that we're going to cover whatever that final bid may be. So, that's all I had, would be happy to address any questions you might have. Again, just kind of the kickoff, this is saying, let's get this started, and we know there are going to be a number of things that happen in the next couple of months.
Brandy?
I don't have any questions, so I'll just make a motion to approve Resolution 1067-2021, a resolution approving the sale of Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Refunding and Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series 2021.
And Melvin?
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare, George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Saucetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes seven zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's good to be here.
That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider approving the purchase of new water meters. How you doing, Simon?
Good, how are you guys tonight?
Fantastic.
So, I'm here to, of course, to request the purchase of some more water meters. Currently, the city of Park City has approximately 3,200 water meters throughout the Water Distribution Center. Many of these meters are analog, and they're aging, and as they age, they become less accurate. In April of 2017, council first approved purchasing electronic meters instead of purchasing standard meters to comply with what we thought was a KDHT swap-out requirement. To date, there have been 840 electronic meters installed. Although the use of electronic meters is more accurate, more helpful, it's helped reduce the amount of unaccounted water loss, the city of Park City still has a significant amount of water loss. As such, we're requesting the purchase of 105 eighths by three-quarter meters to replace older meters, primarily within the horseshoe and continuing with the neighbors between I-35 and Hydraulic south of Sixty-first Street. Additionally, due to the growth, the growth in all the new home construction that we have throughout the city, we're requesting the purchase of additional 101-inch water meters to be able to supply those new homes. The financial impact, it's budgeted as to be paid out of the utility water fund, and the staff recommends approval. Do you guys have any questions?
Ben?
Yeah, I had a question just on what you had said there. You said that we're still having a large amount of water loss. Is that due to the, are you talking about just because of the old meters that are still failing? Or are you talking about the ones that, the electric ones that we went to are having problems?
So, as the meters age, they lose their accuracy, and that they don't account for all the water that's being utilized. So, but replacing these meters with the older meters with the newer meters increases that accuracy, which would in turn reduce the amount of loss that's unaccounted for. There's loss due to other issues like, such as fire hydrant flushing, or items like that. That would also cause loss, but you know, we're trying to tackle as much as we can from all different angles and try to figure out where we're losing water.
I think I just heard wrong concerning that. I thought that you were saying that we're having issues with the newer meters.
No, the older meters.
I'm on board, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Is there a recommendation from the council? Jim?
I don't have any questions, so I would move to approve the quote from Metron Farnier to purchase 101-inch water meters and 105 eighths by three-quarter water meters in the amount of $94,300 to be paid out of the utility fund, Water Department.
And Ben?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
That brings us to item nine, which is discuss and consider an ordinance amending Sections 15-708 relating to water disconnection and related penalties for persons failing to comply with the emergency water usage restrictions. Doug?
Mayor and council, at your last meeting, Simon presented to you an updated municipal water conservation plan. The council reviewed that and approved it, and part of that plan was referenced to the city's emergency water usage ordinances that are already on the books. And in the discussions that the council had, the one change that you wanted to make was where there were some specific reconnection fees stated in the ordinance that was presented by Simon. I think the feeling was, we wanted to make that something we didn't have to go back and amend all the time, so make reference to the existing reconnection fee, and then subsequent violations in a year period would be one and a half, and then two times that base fee. And so, that's the one change that's been made, and that's Section 15-708, and there's an amending ordinance that does that. In fiscal impact, I think I said, I made a comment that this was kind of a wash. There's quite a significant due process that staff has to go through if somebody is found alleged to be in violation and responsible for a reconnection fee, and that likely to be kind of offset. Probably more importantly, I think it's kind of highly unlikely that we're going to have much of this at all. I think, generally speaking, people, when there's a water emergency, are compliant, and getting down to a disconnection is probably something that's pretty much a last resort. But that is a change we need to make, and I would recommend that you adopt the amending ordinance.
Doug, just wanted to point out, there was a typo correctly in the ordinance that went out in Section 3, where Park was missing.
Yes, and I think.
And then Marlo.
Marlo has a corrected copy, thank you for that, yes.
Marlo corrected that and highlighted it, and everybody should have that in front of them. Ben?
Yeah, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve Ordinance 1118-2021 and Ordinance amending Sections 15-708 relating to the water disconnection and related penalties for persons failing to comply with emergency water usage restrictions.
Mel, her, George, were you there?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare, George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Saucetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes seven zero. Thank you, Marlo. That brings us to item 10, which is discuss and consider modification to the agreement with the Yandot Nation related to the city providing municipal services on the trust land at Crosswinds Casino. Doug?
Mayor and council, at your last meeting, we presented to you a draft of an agreement, a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Yandot Nation relating to the city's provision of municipal services to the Crosswinds Casino. And at the time, you approved that agreement, but subject to some minor changes that could be made by the staff, with the understanding that if there were substantive changes made, it would come back to you. That's why it's coming back. You have in front of you a red-lined copy of that agreement. Everything in there that's red-lined, except for one thing, Sean and I considered to be just matters of form, or really minor tweaks to the agreement that was made by the attorney for the Yandot Nation. But the one specific item that was discussed at our last meeting is that the revenue that the city will receive from the proceeds, from the gross, adjusted gross proceeds generated by the casino, is 1.5% of those proceeds. The agreement that you looked at last time had no cap on it. The cap now is $50 million annually. So, to the extent that the casino, in a year's time, produces gross proceeds as defined in the agreement in excess of $50 million, the city does not receive a percent and a half of any of those revenues. But it restarts every year.
Jim?
Okay, I probably, probably, I have a pretty major objection to this, because we all hope the casino continues to grow. I don't know if we all hope, but it would be an assumption that the casino continues to grow in revenues, like most businesses. They could expand into this other land, whatever causes inflation, whatever their revenues go up. And that brings in more and more people, of which this contract now has a cap on, you know. That would put a burden on our police department. And now we've got a cap on it. When you do the math on this, this cap is, I mean, this is a great deal for what we've got on the table, but to cap future growth indefinitely, which is what we just, what they're asking us to do, it's a maximum number without an expiration date, right?
No, actually, we have an out.
Actually, yeah, that's correct. The conversations that have been had at a staff level have always been that when there is some significant change in the operation above what the grand opening is out there right now, and development of the area around there, which is not subject to the memorandum, that all is outside of that 10 acres, and so that all is ad valorem taxable. But two meetings ago, you approved the law enforcement memorandum of understanding. That's the real meat and potatoes of what we're supplying to the casino. And that has a 30-day, essentially, termination provision in it from either side. So, to the extent that something happened that you're imagining, which would be a good thing from the standpoint of the casino operation, but potentially some sort of a drag on the city's resources because of additional demand on our police force, we have the ability to say there, you need to come back and talk to us. If you don't, then we'll just terminate this law enforcement agreement.
Okay. I'm thinking about that. Yeah, that was my, that was my objection. I didn't want to do anything that was fiscally irresponsible without, without an out or an end date of some sort.
And sir, if I may, in the conversations that we've had with the Yandot Nation, they have always indicated that this would be just the initial memorandum of understanding, and when things expand out there, operations expand out there as far as the next stage, the next development, and that would be the appropriate time for us to sit back down again and renegotiate and talk about this again. So, yes, it is true that right now, this does not have an expiration date on it, but as Doug has pointed out, the law enforcement, which is truly what they're paying for, that does have a leverage point for us.
None of the best time to negotiate a contract's upfront, but wouldn't it be appropriate to put an end date or some kind of a, in this contract as well?
I would recommend, not just because of the fact.
No, I think what, again, knowing that what the real value to the Yandot Nation is, is our police protection. And we have that agreement in place with the ability to tell them, we need to change this, or we're going to get out of this, then I don't, I don't see any reason to try to predict in the future when we need to renegotiate this. Because right now, there's a, there are a lot of things happening. There's a lawsuit that's pending. I mean, there is the, there is actually the potential that there could be a federal, a ruling by a federal judge that says they can no longer have this casino. So.
Sure.
So, I think on their side, there's probably similar uncertainty. And so, I think that the uncertainty is memorialized in the law enforcement agreement. Either side can say, yep, 30 days, we're done with this. I don't know how to predict what sort of end date to put in this. I mean, I wouldn't know whether two years, or three years, or five years, or 10 years would be appropriate.
So, Jim, I want to let you know that I had these discussions earlier. And if you've penned it, and you know what the math is on that max amount, and what we're looking at for providing the law enforcement services, and that is more than like the ad valorem, what we would get off the property of it. We have the 30-day out on the one service that we will be providing, and we could execute that form and then still collect what we're getting. So, from their point, they would want to come back and renegotiate that, and I think they're willing to. And also, if you look at their other one, it has a $30 million revenue that it's currently producing, and they expect this one to hit 50. So, I think we're in the right ballpark, and we still, we're still winning. And especially, you know, we're still collecting sewer water off of that property as well. And then when we look at expansion of what could actually happen around that, we're going to continue to. we're going to continue to see growth off of those property values that we can collect on.
Okay.
So I would just have you look at that, that dollar amount and put it in relation of the property and the buildings on there and what we would get in the property tax value.
I agree there. That's, you know, it's good math now. I was concerned about down the road and if we've covered our basis on the.
And that was one of my conversations. Sean and I had multiple times on that, but I feel confident in the service that we are being compensated for out of that with having the thirty-day out, that we still have a strong hand in that.
And if I may, sir, the one other thing to bring to that point is the cap level that was established was predicated on their expected adjusted gross income on an annual basis, not what they would grow into, but what facility of that size, that many number of games, everything. That's because we do have the history of what the Seventh Street Casino does, and it has been consistent at that amount for now nearly fourteen years that it's been going on. And it was capped at what they projected. So it's not a matter of there's growth to be had in the current building that they have. It's a matter of we would sit down and talk about this when they're looking at growth beyond the four walls that they have right now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tom?
That answered part of my question. So we're looking at the current facility.
Yes, sir.
And this stays in agreement whether or not we're doing law enforcement.
That's correct.
The way it's written. Am I wrong?
Nope, that is correct.
Okay. But, and I just wondered how it lined up with what we were doing in Kansas City, so.
More favorable.
Yeah. We're getting a better deal.
Well, okay. I just wanted to understand how we're lining up with it, so.
More favorable.
Okay. And I do understand that sewer and water and everything else is on top of that, plus any development outside that ten acres is additional, so.
Yes, sir.
Brandy?
I too had the same concerns, and I came to talk to Sean today and got this exact same answer. And I, I feel comfortable with it now. Like I said, I had those concerns. But so with that, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Ben?
I'll second for discussion. Does Seventh Street, does that have a cap on theirs? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, so theirs is that?
There's actually three different caps. It's a certain percentage for the first X amount of dollars, and then another percentage for the next X amount of dollars, and then a third lower percentage for the final last amount of dollars.
Okay. I guess my thoughts don't have any pertinent, pertinent to this question, so I'm good.
Tom, did you have something else?
I was gonna second it.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes six-one. All right, we'll move on to governing buyer reports, and we'll start with George Glover.
Yeah, we're excited about our fishing derby. You know, because of COVID last year, we had to cancel it, but this year we're confident we're able to give it a go. So it's the nineteenth of June at Hat McLean Park, North Chisholm Point Pond. For those folks who haven't been to our derby before, it starts at a nine and goes to eleven. We do a derby where we give a rod and reel for the shortest fish and the longest fish in three age categories. At the end of that time, we would do raffles, where we give away a lot of prizes, a lot of free food coupons, a lot of those same businesses are the businesses we have here in Park City. So we'd like everybody to come out. If you don't have a rod and reel, we have loaner rods available for you to use. So it's a good time. It's a good way to get back involved within our community. Thank you.
Capps?
Well, I'll tell you what, these are uncertain times we're living in. There's a lot of anxiety and stress, and I think we all need to just take a step back and look at things and stuff. And, you know, I for one, you know, I believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, and I, I know that He's not uncertain. He knows what's ahead of us. And I talk to Him daily, and I feel confident that we got a good future.
All right, Ben?
Yeah, I want to first off say thank you to our community relations board. They had a great Easter egg hunt over the Easter weekend. I counted somewhere when I was there about a hundred people roughly, and so no doubt many came and went that I didn't see. So thank you to all those who came out, but thank you to the community relations board for your hard work on that. It's nice to be back up here with everybody. It's good to have neighbors again on the bench there. And then finally, I'm excited. I'll be, I will be able to host now that we're on the back end of hopefully this COVID stuff. This Saturday will be convos over coffee. It's been a long time since I've been able to say that. Excited to do that. Sean will be joining me at the Darnett Place at nine AM this Saturday. So come on out, have a great time, have a cup of coffee, and we'll talk.
Melvin?
I have nothing.
Tom?
I just wanted to get on the horizon that we need to start looking at traffic lights at one-thirty-five and Fifty-third Street. There are different times during the day when traffic's backing clear up on the one-thirty-five. It's impossible to make a left because of traffic on Fifty-third Street, on two Fifty-third Street. People are making right turns, going down, making U-turns, and coming back to go west because it's quicker. I sat there for five minutes tonight getting off at five o'clock. It was about five to five, so. And that's going to be a big hit because I think somewhere between a quarter, a quarter of a million and a half million dollars for lights, if you did both sides, I think. It's a half a million, but one side's probably a quarter of a million. But we need to get it working because once Quick Shop opens up and some other things down there happens, it'll be impossible to get off of there at night and in the morning, so. I want to get that after.
Brandy?
I just have a couple of things. First is with the increased traffic at the casino, Seventy-seventh Street and hydraulic. The stoplights or the stop signs both there go in both east and west. There's lots of people who run those intersections even before all the traffic, and it's, I've seen it a little bit more frequently now, too. And as we're out there riding our bikes or whatever, I've, I can tell you, I've almost been hit three different times by people running those lights. So I'd like to maybe look and see if we can see about getting stop signs there that have flashing red lights on both sides. The community relations board, in conjunction with New Anthem Church, on May twenty-second is hosting Serve Day. And so if you have any project that you would like the church and volunteers to come and assist you with, please reach out to Sherry at New Anthem or the community relations board, and we'd be happy to get you an application so we can get you taken care of. And then also, the Fourth of July is back on this year, and that's going to have the pageant, the parade, the park activities and fireworks. And we're looking at food trucks, and so we're going to try to shoot for a big event again this year. That's all.
Jim?
I don't have anything to add tonight.
Ben?
Should I go ahead and make a motion? We adjourned.
And George?
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. He and Queen of Park City at nineteen sixty-seven.